Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled Beaver Creek City Council meeting. This is August 10th. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doerr.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I hear a motion for Councilmember?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. I'd like to turn things over now to Councilmember Doerr for the pledge.
Thank you. If you are so inclined, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessing of this day. Thank you for the hard work of so many that helped to run the city of Beaver Creek, employees who humbly strive to create a better community for others. I pray for wisdom and guidance for us as members of City Council. Give us discernment on the decisions that we have the opportunity to make. May we humbly approach our community humbly, asking questions and showing concerns for the needs of residents. I pray that you would bring peace and comfort to Captain Molner and his family on the passing of his father, Dave. Thank you for the many years of influence he had on his family, community, and the Beaver Creek Police Department. Pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any changes? May we approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. First is the July 25th Council Management Strategy. Any additions or changes to the minutes?
Move to approve the July 25th Council Management Strategy minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for July 25th, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is the July 27th Regular Meeting of the City Council. Any comments?
Motion to approve the July 27th Regular Meeting minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for July 27th, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have a couple very special presenters tonight, and so I would like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Paul Otten and Joanne Righdano.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank City Council for the opportunity to be here tonight. I wanted to give you kind of an update on our start to the school year. As you can imagine, March 16th, everything kind of changed at that point for our community when our students were sent home. And I honestly think that most of us believed that we would be gone for a few weeks and then come back in. And as we prepare to open up here soon, we're still kind of dealing with a lot of turmoil, a lot of unknown pieces. And it does change almost on a daily basis for the school. So I wanted to kind of give the City Council a glance at some information about what we're looking to do for the start of the school year. We looked at a number of options, and the Board of Education and the administration really landed on two options that we're providing to our families. First one is a traditional in-school option, and the second one is a remote learning. And we're going to talk about both those tonight and give you a little flavor for what these two look like and how different they are for the school district. One of the first things that we did in June is we interviewed, or I'm sorry, we surveyed our families. We did not interview them. We surveyed them back in June, and we asked them a couple of questions. And back in June, we asked if a traditional return was to occur, would you send your student? And you'll see about 90% of our parents said yes, we will be sending our students under a traditional model. And then looking at, one of the other questions was, we asked them to rank their first choice. So we actually gave them three choices, gave them a traditional, a hybrid model, and then a remote option. And 70% of our families chose traditional, face-to-face or in-person, as their top option. So those were the results back in June. Fast forward to the end of July, those things changed a little bit. Again, I'll direct your attention towards the bottom question. That's very similar to the first question we asked. And so you can see the change from 89.5%, the 64% said yes, they would send their students, and 36 said no, they would not, they wanted to access the remote option. So big change there over the summer. Also, we looked at, how do we want to start our school year? Right now, in the state of Ohio, there's really three models that we're seeing across the state. We're seeing a traditional return. We're seeing a blended return where students come a number of days during the week, and then they do remote work at home. And then we're also seeing a fully remote option where students are not coming to school at all five days a week. So we asked this question, is what was their preference looking at the start? So 45% of our families said yes, we still would like to have a traditional start. 33% said blended, and 22% said remote. So even though traditional's still the frontrunner here, when you add up the backside of it, it's obviously a minority in that. So as we looked at this, as of today, we've had to do a number of adjustments. Each of you have a calendar sitting in front of you. That is actually our third calendar. The first calendar, we made a minor adjustment and added one day to staff. The third calendar that we looked at, which is the one you're holding right now, our board approved last week or a week before that, and that change, what we've done is we've captured every professional development day that our staff has throughout the year, we moved all those days to the front. We pushed back a week, and we added a week onto the end of the school year. So this new calendar does a couple of things that we like. First of all, it gives us a little more time at the beginning. It gives our staff, they will report this Friday, they will give them six days that they will be able to work in their classrooms, receive professional development training, and prepare their classroom space. The other thing it does is it allows us to have a staggered start with our students. So on the 24th, that is our first day for students A through K, and on the 25th, it's L through Z, and on the 26th, it's everybody. So we're going to go through this a little bit and kind of tell you some things that are very different under this new model, things that we've never had to worry about. We worried about, you know, how many wins are we going to have in the football season? How's our soccer team going to look? How's our academic team going to look? So on and so forth. Those things are really not on the table right now. We're focusing on how are we going to make it through every day with our kids and provide the safest environment possible. We didn't change anything with our school hours. They remain the same. All K-12 students who chose the traditional model, those students will be coming five days a week. And you'll notice it says no change to class sizes other than the reduction of online students. Some school districts that see a large removal of students, they're actually reducing staff. We are not reducing staff. It is kind of counterproductive to do that. You'll see in a later slide, I break down what those numbers look like for our families that are pulling out of online, or that are actually attending online. Obviously, when you reduce students out of a building, we are now scheduling kids under that to better divide them. Some of our classes, we think, will probably be around 16. We may have on the low end about a 14-student class, and on the high end, maybe a 20-student class. So less students, and as we're removing furniture out of spaces, it's going to provide us the opportunity really to spread our students out, not only in the classroom but in the lunchroom as well. Visitors, we always welcome our community to come into the building. Unfortunately, this year, we will not be encouraging that. Obviously, everybody who walks in could bring something with them that we do not want them to bring in. Our students, all K through 12, will eat in the cafeterias. There are some schools that are eating in the classrooms. When we look at our schedule, our teachers need to have that time, not only in their classroom, but they need to have the time to prep the classroom in between. When students are eating lunch, they can clean. They can also get ready for the second half of the day. Interesting piece is our middle school and high school. As of today, our students walk in and they sit where they want to. That is going to change. This is going to be a dramatic change for our middle school through high school students. We're going to tell them they have about three days to find the group that they want to sit with. Once they find them, they are going to be locked down to that group for the semester. We will take pictures of every table in order to do contact tracing. If a student at that table would come up ill, they're not going to be permitted to move around the different spots. Recession will continue to happen in our elementary schools. We're still working through the details of what that looks like, but obviously, when you're dealing with equipment, we're not going to be rolling our equipment out. We'll be asking students if they want to bring a specific piece of playground equipment to do that themselves. Obviously, it becomes very difficult with how they handle that with other students. Assemblies, field trips, those are discontinued for this year. And that's really hard to say that because we know the benefit that assemblies bring to our kids, and we also know how great it is to be able to go on a field trip. One of the pieces that we're asking our parents to do is, we are asking them to monitor their children. Some school districts are actually taking temperatures of students every day when they walk in. If we did that at Beaver Creek High School, we would have a bottleneck at almost every entrance. I have, my two boys attended Beaver Creek High School last year. One graduated. I have a daughter who's going there with my son, and I know what time they arrive there. They arrive there just before they have to be there, and if there was a line, it's going to create problems. So we are asking our families really to monitor those students before they leave each day and determine whether they should send them. One of the things we always try to do is obviously encourage attendance, and if you're not sending your child, there's problems usually with the school district. Not in this year. We are really trying to encourage families. We're going to work with families if they have students who are ill or sick, not to send them. Cleaning and sanitizing, this is going to happen throughout the entire day. When you look at Beaver Creek High School, they have seven bells. They have bells that are happening all day long. At the end of each class, we will be giving up some of our instructional time because the teacher will be spraying every desk, and that student will be exiting as they clean the desk. They will spray the desk again as the new students walk in, and they will wipe that. So we will do double cleaning in between classes. So we're going to need our students to assist us with that. And obviously, we need to be able to do that because we know that we cannot keep kids in one spot in our high school and move staff. It just doesn't work that way. In our elementaries, we're able to do much more with how the students stay there. Bathrooms, big question from families. Typically, we clean bathrooms every night. We will continue to clean them every night and sanitize them, but we will clean them before lunch, after lunch, before the end of the day. So we're looking at multiple times, three or four times a day, on certain bathrooms that we will be closed down. Water fountains will be disconnected, or turned off, I should say. Interesting piece, we will be teaching our kids how to wash their hands, and not only just using water and soap, but how to use our dispensers. This is one of those mandates, we feel we have to put this in here, but just to talk about funding. Every classroom in the district will have a hand sanitizer machine. It obviously will be full all the time, and we will also install these in public areas, our cafeterias, and hallways, and they will be on every bus. So we will encourage kids when they walk in to use this, and we encourage them to use it when they walk out the door as well. Just the install and the first full shipment or the first dose of soap that goes in there will cost the district $33,000, and we anticipate the continuous cost per month to be about Drop-off and pickup, obviously, we're still transporting kids. We have a lot of families that said they will not be using transportation, so they will be driving. So you can understand, I want the city to understand, we will have backed-up roads as we have multiple families trying to get kids in. So we will be working with our building principals to try to organize what does that look like, what's the best way of getting our students in and out every day. Face mask policy, this is, first of all, you all look so great in your face masks. Thanks for wearing those. Again, those are a gift from the class of 2020, so we appreciate that. And this has been the most contentious item, and we see it across the country right now. The governor came out about a week ago and passed an order through the Health Department that all students in grades K through 12 will wear a face mask. We already have our staff wearing face masks. We are supportive of that at this point because we understand the benefits of wearing that face mask. We fully understand the more days we can be in session, the better off we all are, and that's what we're really trying to do. All students, if a student shows up without a face mask, we will provide that to the student. I want you to understand that. It'll be a paper face mask, but we will have them, like a surgical one, we will be distributing those as well. Same with our bus. If a student gets on the bus, we will provide that for them as well without having it. Transportation, really not a whole lot to cover here, other than we're going to try to sit families together. So if you have a fifth-grade student or first-grade student, the fifth-grade student usually sits in the back because that's the cool place to sit. Now they're going to be sitting with their first-grade sibling, but we understand the benefit of trying to keep our families together as well. This next graph I want to show you, this is really how we've based our entire process on for how are we going to move under traditional. So a couple of things. We are going traditional five days a week, but we have a flexible plan, and that flexible plan allows us the opportunity to move in and out of the traditional setting. So if you are a student or a family that has chosen the traditional instructional option, if we are in levels one or two as a county, and today we sit in level two, orange, if we're in yellow or orange as a county, we are in school. We are five days a week. That's what it's going to look like. If the county would move to level three, the entire district will move to what we're calling a blended model. And I can share with you what that will look like. We will have student A go on Monday and Wednesday, and student B will go on Tuesday and Thursday. And on Friday, the teachers will continue to report, but they will do a remote learning on that day. So if I'm student A, I will be in school Monday, home on Tuesday, back in on Wednesday, home on Thursday. And so we don't want to live in that hybrid model. That's going to be difficult for our families. Any model that we come up with is going to be difficult for them to balance, but the purpose of going to a blended model allows the district to even cut down our attendance. So if I have 20 kids in a room and we go to a blended, I now should, in theory, have 10 students in that room. But also know that it slows the instruction down, because whatever student A learns on Monday, that's the same thing student B's learning on Tuesday. We've just lost a day there. So we don't love the blended model. We don't really love the hybrid model, but we would do that to try to keep our kids in school because we know them, sitting in our classrooms are so important. If our county would go to a level four, which is the purple, then we would go full remote. We would close the school at that point. And you may also see that we may have schools that move in between those while other ones don't. So if we have an outbreak at Shaw Elementary, we may move Shaw Elementary to level three, blended, and everybody else is still traditional. So we want to be responsive to what that looks like. So that is for all our students that are going to be coming every day of the week in school, and then we have students who chose remote learning. And I'll give you the numbers here in a minute, but just to put it in perspective, roughly 75% of our students chose the traditional model. So that deadline has come and passed. A little shy of 75% have chosen the traditional model, and about 25.4% or 25.6% have chosen this remote learning option. What we are doing is, we're working through the Green County Educational Service Center. Every school district in Green County is using this program. So this is not specific to Beaver Creek, it's specific to the whole county. If you are in grades six through 12, you're going to be using a program called Edmentum. Edmentum is a research-based program. It offers our students great curriculum and a lot of electives that they can take. These will factor right into the high school, into our elementary schools, just as any other class would, but it is a fully online option that is supported by a Beaver Creek teacher. It is not taught by a Beaver Creek teacher. It is taught online, but it is supported by a Beaver Creek teacher. So a teacher will be assigned to a student. So each group of students will have a teacher that's assigned to them to help them with different subject areas or with problems that they may come up with. That holds true for K through five, same thing. Again, this is called Lincoln Learning. Lincoln Learning is really a very similar platform, but we will only be teaching the four core areas here. We will not be doing electives in this program. We've asked families to commit for a semester. The reason we've asked for a semester is it allows our students, once they sign up, to be able to finish that work to get the credit, especially our high school and middle school students that will be signing into an actual class to get them through so they have that credit moving forward. A question that's been asked is, why aren't we having Beaver Creek teachers teach this? You have to understand, in order to have two different instructional models, we would have to pull teachers out of the classroom in order to serve our students online, and we're not able to do that. If we do that, we're reducing our staff, then making our classes in the building larger to do that. So we felt this was the best thing, and it was a countywide approach to do it. All right. You'll hear two different things. We talk about remote learning, and we talk about online instruction or blended. Everything here is remote. So these are students who will start on the same calendar that we start with. They will begin their classes online, and then they will have to make a decision at the beginning of December whether or not they're going to continue online for the second semester, and they will go through a process to do that. A question that has been asked about special education population of students, we are working with our special education families. If we have a family that says, I do not want to send my student into the classroom, we are going to be working with them to do different therapies outside the classroom so that we can meet their needs. Our goal is to really come up with a plan that allows all our families an option that fits best for them. GPA, everything will get considered, AP classes, honor, scholarship classes, we've crafted those ourselves. Those will all factor in as well, and they'll be treated just as every other student. In addition, once they've done this and we look through, they can participate in all extracurricular activities, and if we have a situation where they would like to speak with a counselor, we will provide all those services. We want all our online students to be treated just like our traditional students. Here's a breakdown of our first enrollment numbers. So you will see that, and we have a number of students who are Green County Career Center students, they're not factored into these numbers, but you'll notice that when you look at the numbers, we had 741 students that were not, they did not sign up. So those students who have not signed up for traditional or online, those obviously revert to traditional. So that's where we come up with our numbers of 74.4 and 25.6. And then you'll see on the next slide to your right, kind of the breakdown of what that impact is for the building. If you look at Shaw Elementary, 35 students coming out of Shaw, that's huge. That's a big number. That will make our classes much smaller there at Shaw, so we'll be able to do, and you can really see it, it really carries throughout the entire district. Athletics, I'll tell you, athletics are a big hot item, and this does change daily. We are, right now, the G-Walks, the superintendents and the G-Walk, met with the ADs and high school principals. We've agreed that we will be a conference-only league, meaning moving forward, we will only play our conference teams. Two reasons behind that. One, we have control over the standard that we're setting for athletics. And number two, if we have a case that breaks out with the girls tennis team, let's say, and we have to cancel all our matches, we can grab those matches at the end of the season. It'll be easier to schedule because those teams that we are playing, they're going to need us to reschedule as well. As of today, the approved sports for the fall are cross-country, boys and girls golf, girls tennis, girls volleyball. The two that have not been approved are football and soccer. So we anticipate that there's going to be guidance coming out this week in regards to how we're going to proceed with that. Next steps, we will continue. We watch all the information comes out. We'll watch tomorrow. We've already been told that Governor DeWine is going to be addressing schools tomorrow, so we'll eagerly await to see what comes out. Our building principals are working with our staff right now, preparing the building, but we're excited to get our kids back, and we have staff that feel the exact same way. And with that, we'll also continue to provide weekly communications to our families so that they understand what's going on. Key dates for the district, you can see staff returns on the 14th, professional development for those six days. We're going to do our opening day staff kickoff. I will share that with Pete. We always invite you to come to attend that. We always want to recognize you. Obviously, we will not be doing that this year, no hard feelings, but we are not inviting our staff to come together. We are going to have our staff stay in their buildings. We're going to do an opening day link. I will share that with Pete. Pete will share that with you, but it's not going to be live, it's going to be taped, and we're going to recognize all the staff that we typically recognize. We look forward to next year being able to bring everybody back together for that kickoff because it means so much. Then again, our staggered start for the 24th and 25th, and then all students reporting on the 26th. I wanted to let, I wanted to give you a couple perspectives. One, obviously, as superintendent of the district, this has been, one thing that I have learned is regardless of the plan that you come up with, it is not a win-win for anybody, very clearly. Right now, we are traditional. Bell Brook's starting with a hybrid. Yellow Springs is starting remote. If you talk to the other two superintendents, they will tell you that they spend every night answering emails of people who are saying, why aren't you doing what Beaver Creek's doing? Why aren't you doing what Yellow Springs is doing? We've had every question. What works for one family does not work for every family, and we really truly see the benefit of bringing our kids together, but we also fully recognize the fear and the reality of what this virus is, not only for our students but for our staff. You know, you're kind of on pins and needles. I've told people, the worst thing about being superintendent is snow days, because that's the one time that you have one group of people that love your call and the other group that hates your call, and we are living in a snow day every day. It feels like it's every day is a snow day. But our Board of Education recognizes that, and I want to introduce Joanne Righdano and give her an opportunity to kind of talk about what she has seen and kind of her perspective on our restart. And then really, the next slide is questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
This is really a hard time. If somebody would have told me this is the way the school year was going to start, I would have told them they were crazy. That's not what was going to happen. You know, you can't imagine all the emails we have received, both the administration and the board members. I mean, I decided I might want to write a book on all the emails because they have been, you know, we've gone them from parents, community members, and we've had people who have been very supportive of our plan, as well as those who've been unhappy and have offered us their version of a plan that we should implement. And while, and here's the situation, I mean, there are pros and cons to every plan, and there's no one plan that everyone's going to agree upon. You know, the district is working with the guidelines, as Ms. Roden said, you know, both the CDC, the Public Health Department in Green County, the mandates from the governor, and you know, and the plan that our district put in place, they felt was the best for our students, parents, and staff. You know, I told one of the parents in one of my emails, I wish I had that magic wand that could produce a plan acceptable to everybody with no risk, but that plan just doesn't exist. You know, right now, the new normal is constant change, and what I like about our plan is that it is flexible enough to allow for change with the current COVID situation, but most importantly, it gives our parents a choice, a choice to send their kids back to school, or a choice for the online option. And that, to me, as a board member and a former teacher, that's important, that parents have this choice. We're arming them with all the information we can. I know a lot of parents have been saying, we're constantly changing, we're constantly changing. Well, it's not the district that's constantly changing. I'm not putting the blame on anybody else, but we have to follow. It's the law, the mandates that are given to us. Tomorrow, if Governor DeWine throws more changes at us, then we've got to tell our parents, this is what Beaver Creek Schools have to follow. So I want our parents to know, number one, we totally respect them. We are so happy to receive their emails, no matter how many we have gotten. We respect their opinions, and we want to work as a team. That's how I always tell everybody, Beaver Creek City Schools, with the parents, the teachers, we're a team. We are a family. That's what I like, and we're always willing to work with our parents. They're very supportive, and we want their input. It's really important to us. These are hard times, there is no doubt, and this is going to be a difficult school year. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat and say, oh, yeah, welcome to 2020. It's going to be a difficult year, but you know what? what? Our staff is ready. We have, I tell everybody, we do have the best staff. It's the truth. If you see these teachers, nurses, bus drivers, they have worked so hard when school was out. None of them had closure this year. Their kids all walked out of the building, and that was it. High school teachers didn't see the seniors getting to walk around the building for the last time during the last week of school. Kindergarten kids couldn't be hugged. But you know what? Teachers, nurses, bus drivers, administrators, all put videos out on Facebook telling the kids right after school is out and through June, how much they were loved, how much they were cared for, how much they were there for them. Teachers are driving down streets, honking their horns in front of kids' houses, wishing them happy birthdays, telling them they were there for them. So you know what? I've been in Beaver Creek 30-something years, and this is the best move my husband and I have ever made. When we first moved here, the lady from New York City went, Beaver Creek? What is that? You know what? I tell people, best move ever, because I've never seen a community that really supports each other. As a teacher, this community was there for me all the time. So I would like to personally thank the parents, thank the community for all their support they have given to us. And you know what? We're going to get through this together. We really are. And at the end of the day, when we finally walk out of this virus, we're going to be different people. We're going to be stronger, and we're going to be better. So thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. We're going to get through this.
All right. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions or not?
Please, go ahead.
Superintendent, a couple of questions. Online learning.
I've heard concerns, as you have, let's say there's no parents in the house.
Right.
And you're dealing with particularly of, you know, elementary school child. Observations. What, how do we?
Yeah, we would, we would encourage all our families. We kind of ran into some of this in back in March.
Did you?
When we went remote. We had families, if you remember, the governor came out on a, I want to say a Friday, and said, we're going to go ahead and call it. You have to be out by Tuesday, or maybe it was Thursday, and you had to be out by Tuesday. We made Monday our last day to give our teachers a little bit of time. Well, that didn't give parents a lot of time to respond. So we had heard all that. So obviously, we want to put as many supports in place as we can. We're working right now with Right at School, which is our home provider, or our daycare provider that we have on onsite. Also, we've been in conversation with our daycares, and I know our daycare's just freed up space. Governor just released that about a week and a half ago. So we know that there's going to be times where we're going to have families that do not want to send their kids, they don't know what they're going to do with their kids during the day. So anything that we can do, we'll reach out to help them.
Second question. What about that fantastic band?
Yes.
Choir? What's the status of that?
All right, those are two totally different things. First of all, a band is, they're 280-plus members right now. They are at the high school praxin'. They are doing it so well. They're all broken, the smaller groups, spread throughout the entire campus. I would encourage anybody to drive by there. Our kids are outstanding. Every one of them's wearing a mask. They're socially distanced, just like your chairs are. That's how they function. They've made decisions that they're not going to travel and compete this year, but they want to perform for our families and their families, obviously. So we're going to try to find every opportunity that we can do that. Playing an instrument is very different than singing. The green, the health department in the state of Ohio and really around the country has said, that is probably the most dangerous act, is singing forcefully pushing your voice out, forcefully projecting. And that, so right now, we still have choir set up. We are asking our choir directors to be creative. They will not be permitted to sing indoors, but they might be able to go out to the stadium and spread out in the stadium to sing. They, they, our teachers are being very creative, trying to figure out, how do I record each kid? How do I put it together? We have a great show choir. They're going to be impacted by the same thing as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Please.
Yeah, as as one parent, I would like to simply say thank you for all of your hard work and for the board as well. It's a very difficult time, and I know you've worked very, very hard. Thank you for the surveys, to hear our input, as well as the choice in terms of of learning. Our son, who's in elementary school, loves his teacher and friends and bus driver, so it's a really wonderful environment. I have one question slash comment, in chatting with a number of other parents, to to put the frequently asked question linked right on the gocreek.org front page.
Yeah, we could do that, absolutely.
Might be of a help to a number of parents. It's maybe the one thing. But I'm really very thankful for all the hard work.
I appreciate that. We will do that tomorrow. We'll direct it there. Yeah, that frequently asked question page is quite long.
Yes.
Quite long, but we will do that.
Anyone else?
I've got just a comment. I've got two kids in the district, and I want to thank you for the communication. It has been constant and and really has met all of our expectations as a family. And so I think that's challenging with the change that you face every day. But I've never felt like we're in the dark. I always feel like we've got a good grasp on what's coming up. I do not envy the role that either of you are in, because I know it's it's changing and so forth. But but I and my wife look forward to sending our kids back to school. I think they're going to learn a lot, and we're just going to roll with it. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We look forward to having them. Trust me.
So I have two questions for you. When you talked about the blended option and the going one day and then the other day.
Right.
So on the days that they are actually not in the classroom, are they virtually learning, or is it essentially like a snow day for them?
So great question. So here's what we've looked at. We looked at, they will be given inform, so let's do the A B thing. If I'm an A student, you're a B student. You're at home on Monday. I'm in school on Monday. On Tuesday, when you're in school, I am supposed to be working on details. It's not a, we won't give them an online option, but it'll basically be a supplement to what they learned on Monday. So it's almost, I don't want to call it a homework, but it almost would look like a homework day. It's kind of what we call flipping the classroom, where we might have them actually try to do the next step, and then we'll build on that on Wednesday, when I would return back in. The Friday day, where there's no students in there, those would be looking at as remote days. So we will have office hours for teachers, so that if if I'm a student in the, if I'm the A student, you're the B student, for worse terms, I guess, to use, but I might have the AM as a time that I can call my teacher. We can actually set up Zoom, or we're going to be using Google Meet with our teachers. So they actually could provide instruction on that fifth day. So what it, it gives them an opportunity for three days of instruction, two days of follow-up, is what we'd be looking at. It's not perfect at all.
No, I mean, you're rolling with what you can.
Trying, yeah.
My second question is, with the remote support teachers, are they also teachers who are actively teaching?
Correct. They will be our teachers, absolutely, yes. So we are, we put a survey out to our staff, because we had a number of staff say, hey, I'd be very interested in doing this. So if it's a second-grade teacher, we will assign second-grade students to that second-grade teacher. And we will try to free up time for them. If we don't have time, then we will actually find time for them in their schedule to be able to do that for them. So we've got teachers that are very excited to do that as well.
Well, thank you. And as my fellow council members have said, I commend you and your staff and the board. You guys are working in a really difficult time, and you're just rolling with the punches. And like you said, I mean, tomorrow could be a whole new game plan, game changer, and now we have to go right back to start, so.
So don't hold on to that handout I gave you.
Yeah, exactly.
Good change, yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Oh, can I ask one more question? I have a question about drop-off, morning drop-off. I echo your concern. I think it's going to be an absolute zoo.
Yep.
But I also think that a lot of parents, like, are, we are probably going to do it. So how are you going to handle tardiness and just like, you know?
We're going to be very flexible.
We're in line to drop them off and?
Yeah, so one of the biggest problems that we see is Maine, because it backs up on Maine. So we have, we started at the end of last school year, looking at how can we get our, and what we might end up doing is bringing our buses in the front and bringing our families around the back, because we know we can get many more cars around the back than the front. So and our buses do fit in the front. We've, we went over and drove buses to line them all up, well, two buses, and we went tail to tail, you know, to do that. So they will fit out in front of the school. And we, so we're looking at options like that. How can we do it differently so that we're not blocking up Dayton-Zenia Road?
Very good. Smart.
Yep.
I do have one question. For those that choose not to go to school, what if they don't have internet? Is there any?
So great question. The school district, back in March, we purchased 40 hotspots just as backups for families. So if a family, let's say they can't make their internet bill because someone got laid off, they need to just call the district, and we'll give them a hotspot. So last year in March, when that happened, we bought 40 hotspots, and we publicized it to our families that we had these. If they were needed, none of them were taken. So as of today, we still have those 40 hotspots, and we would still be giving those out to families if they need them.
Yeah, I'm just sorry that Friends isn't going to be sinking this year.
Yes, I think we all are.
Been with them for a long time, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I, that's why I said to my wife the other day, I'm amazed at the things that you miss in life, that you take for granted, that you can just go and sit in the auditorium and watch, and now that you don't have it, you you miss it, so.
But thank you very much. I appreciate all the work you guys have put into it, because I know it's, it's daily for you. I mean, maybe even hourly, so it's, where changes happen. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the support of city council, and Pete's great to work with. We have a great relationship with the city and the township, and so I appreciate the leadership that this group brings every day.
Well, thanks for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come here.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda, I believe Chief Evers is on the, going to make some announcements and presentations here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk about our awards. Before I do the individual awards, though, I wanted to share with you, as you well know, we were under review by the Commission of Accredited Law Enforcement Agencies. We had our virtual meeting before the commission on Thursday, July 30th. The committee recommended to the full commission that we receive re-accreditation. The full commission voted on August 1st and notified us on August 4th that we are receiving re-accreditation with designations of meritorious and with excellence. So again, I'm really proud of our agency and the work put in by my staff and all of the men and women of the Beaver Creek Police Department for achieving this. This is our seventh accreditation since 1999. It's our third in a row with the designation of excellence. So we're really proud of that accomplishment, and I wanted to share that tonight before we get into the actual awards part of this. Talking about the awards, as we've heard from the schools, we've all had to adjust how we do business. Well, police departments no different. Annually, we have an awards program where we recognize significant accomplishments and achievements during the course of the year. In 2019, we had a number of people who were designated to receive awards, and that's what I'm going to cover with you tonight. This, this program was established to recognize acts of heroism and exceptional service by individuals and promote morale within the department. It's comprised, the awards committee is comprised of the peers. The men and women, sworn and non-sworn, are the makeup of the awards committee, and those participants are selected and serve on that one committee annually, and we change it up by selecting different individuals. Any member of the police department or any private citizen may submit a letter of recommendation for an award or citation to any member of the awards committee. Well, here we go. Somebody gave me a technical device to operate, and as usual. Okay. Okay, the awards that officers and civilians are eligible for, a letter of recognition, which is a letter signed by the chief, which outlines the achievement in demonstrating above-average initiative and effort, or a departmental commendation, which is a certificate signed by the chief recognizing outstanding performance. Meritorious Service Award, again, that's a certificate with a service ribbon. We also have designations that we select each year. We select an Officer of the Year, and that criteria is outlined there. We also select a civilian employee and COPP of the Year. Again, those designations are made. When they're selected, their names go on a plaque that is mounted in our lobby for the public to see, so you can see the list of names of the employees sworn and non-sworn, including our COPPs that have received that award over the years. The Chief's Award of Merit is a award that's pretty much up to the chief. I determine the criteria for it. I typically look at those individuals with a positive attitude and image, a high degree of teamwork, commitment, and/or loyalty to the department, while exemplifying a consistent level of professional excellence throughout their career. This year, we selected two individuals to receive that. I'll start through with the individuals. Officer of the Year, Matt Barber. Matt was hired in 1996. He is our senior firearms instructor and responsible for our firearms training. He's also been trained and launched the initial training that four officers received on our Milo system, which is our judgment de-escalation simulator that we purchased and use for training not only the officers but also to educate the public. Matt's our, our guy you see out there on the motorcycle in the community. Some have met him personally. He, it is our first motor officer in 30 years. 30 years ago, we did have a motorcycle and a motor officer at the Beaver Creek Police Department, and we brought that unit back because I'm sure all of you are very familiar with and probably have received phone calls from residents who say we have a traffic problem in certain areas. Well, Matt's role and his job, which he has embraced with great enthusiasm, is to try to address those specific areas that we receive complaints on. He does a very, very good job of that. The motor unit was started back in 2018, and in 2019, Officer Barber made over 1,100 traffic stops and issued over 1,000 citations and/or warnings during that period. And again, it was to address what we felt was our, effort was not as directed as we needed it to be to try to address problems in the community relative to traffic enforcement. Matt's also a motor escort for special events. When the motorcycles are requested from Green County, he takes part in that. Matt is well-respected within the agency and the department. His teamwork and commitment to the department are exemplary, and he exemplifies the mission statement of our department and our organizational values that are fairness, integrity, and loyalty. The second employee there, the civilian of the year, is one of our newest dispatchers. She came on board in 2018, Carla Countryman. Carla typically has a very positive attitude when she comes to work. She's consistently professional. She maintains her poise and pleasant demeanor, and those that work with her compliment her about what a great teamwork individual she is and how much she contributes to the organization. She came to us from Washington Township when they disbanded their fire dispatching and went, I believe, with the regional dispatch center in Montgomery County. And so Carla brought a vast experience with fire and EMS, which was very beneficial. brought a vast experience with fire and EMS, which was very beneficial to us with the Pro QA that our Beaver Creek Township Fire Department uses. Her experience and knowledge are an invaluable example. Her initiative and teamwork inspires respect, and she, again, is another one that exhibits the ideas and goals of our mission statement. The third individual in this slide is our COPP of the Year, John Fisher. John joined us in 2015. He's devoted over five hundred hours in 2019. He approaches his role with enthusiasm and professionalism, and it's clear he enjoys working with the officers and the citizens. He assists with vacation house checks, traffic control, vehicle crashes, and disabled motorists. He was instrumental, along with Vice Mayor Adams, in working tirelessly for us during the tornado event. We relied heavily on our COPPs, and John and a number of his fellow COPPs were instrumental in helping the police department and the city manage those day, immediate days after the tornado. Again, he also is one, John, that is training our newest recruits that we, we bring onboard in the COPP program. For all those reasons, these three individuals were selected to receive these awards by their peers. Again, these are, the, the awards committee takes in the request or the nominations, and they review all of them, and they make the determination, their peers decide who's going to receive the awards for that year. I'll move to letters of recognition, which, here we go. I'm sorry, I'll move to departmental commendations first, maybe because I flipped the page an extra time here. Departmental commendations, as was noted, are the nominations, again, that were sent to the awards committee. The first one is our Communication Operator, Libby Chapman. Libby was hired in 1998. On October 4th, 2019, she received a 911 call for an emergency of an individual in respiratory distress and was having struggling, having difficulty struggling to communicate. Communication Operator Chapman, thinking outside the box, she instructed the caller to answer questions by tapping on the phone receiver, enabling her to dispatch and advise first responders with more accurate information. Responding officers discovered the house was locked. Officer English broke out a windowpane in the back door to gain entry, and officers located the caller on the living room floor with an oxygen tube underneath her. Officers opened the oxygen flow, rendered aid before medics arrived and, before the subject was transported to the hospital. The caller emailed us several days later, thanking all involved for saving her life. Communication Operators Chapman, expertise, training, and innovative methods were instrumental in communicating with the victim and her ability to quickly assess the situation and adapt to the needs of the caller, which led to the quick response and positive outcome. Officers Chris Brownlee, Officer Dean English, and Officer Chris Unrow and Captain Scott Molnar were also involved in responding to this call and assisted, but primarily the dispatcher who guided them and was able to maintain her composure and keep the caller calm enough to follow the instructions of tapping on a receiver were instrumental in, ultimately us getting there and rendering assistance to her. The second departmental commendation is for Officer Chris Unrow. Officer Unrow, on November 11th, 2019, while picking up lunch at Kroger's, was approached by a distraught female who indicated she was choking. He quickly performed a Heimlich maneuver and dislodged a large piece of food. Later that day, she called the department to express her appreciation and wanted to commend him for coming to her aid, being in the right place at the right time. The third departmental commendation award goes to Officer Joel Schuler. Officer Schuler, on September 10th, 2019, conducted a traffic stop for speeding on US 35 at North Fairfield. After detecting a strong odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle, he requested Officer Majorsack and K-9 Hans. The vehicle search resulted in the amount of fentanyl containing, take note of this, containing five hundred thousand lethal doses of fentanyl. If distributed throughout the area, the amount posed immediate risk to our community and could have led to catastrophic consequences, not to mention to those first responders and the K-9 who stopped this vehicle and interacted with this person. The vehicle ended up being a rental car out of Detroit, and due to his perseverance and doing an outstanding job, he was patrolling Route 35 and observed this vehicle speeding, and the end result was leading to this individual's arrest. His intuition, keen powers of observation, expertise, and training were instrumental in removing this lethal threat to the community. The vehicle's driver was indicted on two first-degree felonies with maximum penalty of prison term nineteen to twenty-four and a half years. So Officer Schuler is to be commended, and Hans did an outstanding job alerting on the vehicle also. Next, we have letters of recognition. Officer Chris Brownlee, Officer Brian Klein, Officer Dean English, and Officer Tim Lammer received letters of recognition for the following. Officers responded to an address on December 14th, 2019. It was a burglary and domestic situation where the subject was known to abuse drugs, have access to firearms, and was entered as a Hopper Alert. For those of you not familiar, that's a alert in our lead system that's a direct result of the, the shooting that took place in Clark County of Deputy Hopper a number of years back. Officers responded Code Three, which is an emergency response light and siren, established a perimeter. Officer Brownlee verbally engaged the suspect through an open garage door while officers maintained cover at key positions throughout the residence and provided the duty supervisor with critical information during the response to the scene. Officers were able to tactically and safely move into the residence, take the suspect into custody without any harm to anyone involved. Recognized for their swift, decisive response and sound judgment, they seamlessly worked together using expertise and training to maintain control and safely, over potentially volatile circumstances, resolved the situation without any injury to anyone involved. All of those individuals received the letters of recognition. I also have Officer Dave Majorsack, and you see Hans there. Officer Majorsack, letter of recognition for a call on December 30th, 2019, where he was requested by Xenia Police Department to assist with an investigation of an armed robbery at the McDonald's on North Detroit Street. Officer Majorsack and Hans traced south from McDonald's to the apartment complex on Kinsey Road. Hans alerted and continued to track to an apartment on the third floor. Xenia PD was able to identify the resident, obtained a search warrant, recovered a gun, a large sum of money. Suspect later confessed and was arrested for aggravated robbery. Officer Majorsack and Hans were instrumental in the resolution of this case. Now, Officer Majorsack got the letter of recognition, and Hans got a couple of extra biscuits for his job well done. So again, these, back up here, we mentioned Officer Molnar. The Chief's Award of Merit. These two individuals received this award for the following. Officer Hilda Brant spent thirty-two years with us and retired on July the 4th. Officer Hilda Brant was instrumental in, as an FTO, Field Training Officer, training new recruits. He was also an exemplary evidence technician, took a lot of pride in collecting evidence, which, in a number of cases where he collected evidence that led to the identification and then the arrest and conviction of individuals who were involved in the crime. He was also one of our range instructors, and he worked tirelessly to improve our training as it pertains to firearms and uses of force. So, he was recognized as a Chief's Award of Merit winner because of his thirty-two years with our organization and his commitment in those thirty-two years, and I trust he's going to enjoy retirement. The second individual, Captain Scott Molnar. Captain Scott Molnar was recognized because last year during the tornado event, he responded directly to the scene. I responded with city manager and the mayor to the fire department, to the EOC, but Captain Molnar was responsible for coordinating the response with the fire department into the neighborhood and coordinating our efforts to assist the fire department to get the roads open, cleared, with the assistance of our Public Service Department, and getting to those residences to make sure the individuals were rescued that needed help. A number of people that were trapped in their residence, and they were afforded assistance through public service workers, police department, and fire department, and the neighbors in those neighborhoods. People were helping people that night. But Captain Molnar was instrumental in coordinating our response that particular night, and he was up for twenty-four straight hours working that detail. But the additional thing that got him the recognition for this too, it was during a time when my other two captains were away at school, and so they were not here, and managing three divisions in our department, managing one is, is a task on certain days, but managing three, which he did for ten weeks, and in the middle of that, he got a tornado to deal with too. So, I felt it appropriate to recognize his efforts because not once did he complain. He only came to me and said, "Boss, what else you need me to do?" So, it's because of his can-do attitude and his teamwork that he was recognized with the Chief's Award of Merit. I'll point out some community awards that were issued also last year. Officer Joel Schuler received the MAD Award. Officer Schuler was hired in 2017, and he is a patrol officer, OIC, and a field training officer. And again, he is one of our most active officers as far as activity. He had over a thousand traffic stops and over a hundred arrests, thirty-eight OVI arrests in 2019, and the MAD Award was appropriate for him to receive as a result of that. He was nominated by Sergeant Crawl, who stated Officer Schuler is the most well-rounded and productive officer in the patrol section, and consistently demonstrates the necessary attributes for this award. He takes great pride in his work, his professional demeanor and consideration and concern for citizens he serves and protects is second to none. Continually, he strives to make himself better. So he was MAD Award recipient in 2019. Unfortunately, because of the COVID situation, our 2020 winner has not been able to receive that as of yet, so, again, awards of, of that nature have been put on hold because it's typically a lunch or a meeting where these are disseminated, and of course, those are not happening right now. The VFW Award, Officer of the Year, went to Sergeant Scott Spangler. He's, was hired in 1996. He's held numerous supervisory positions in our agency. He's currently the Third Watch Supervisor, which is our, right now, two, two PM to ten PM shift. He's our Emergency Vehicle Operations Course Instructor. He holds a master's degree from Xavier University. He's a graduate of the Police Executive Leadership College. He received a Meritorious Service Award in 2019 for performance above and beyond in saving a suicidal female at great risk to his personal safety. This was an, an individual who decided she was going to try to jump off the overpass at Indian Ripple on 675. A couple of our officers were able to distract her, engage her, trying to, to talk her off the overpass. He was able to position himself to where he was able to get a hold of her arm, her wrist, and keep her from jumping. So that's why he received the Meritorious Service Award for those efforts in 2018, but he was also the recipient of the VFW Officer of the Year last year. Officer Barry Weiscup, he received the Knights of Columbus Council Number 7981 Blue Coat Award. Officer Weiscup was hired in April 2008. He currently is the Elementary School Resource Officer and Dare Officer. He's our TASER Defensive Tactics Chemical-Aerosol Instructor. He's an evidence technician, crisis intervention specialist, a bike patrol officer. He's been a member of the Regional Emergency Response Team for the last six years. He also holds a master's degree in Criminal Justice and Human Services from the University of Cincinnati. He and his family are active in their church parish in our community. He has served as a volunteer coach with several local youth organizations, including Eager Beaver Football, Beaver Creek Youth Football Leagues, and he assists with the K through six age group when he's, he's coaching those kids. He helped coach the third through the sixth grade Beaver Creek Community Athletic Association baseball team. He's a volunteer coach for K through six age group of Beaver Creek Youth Wrestling. He volunteered at the National Night to Shine Prom, the Tim Tebow Foundation Night to Shine Ministry. Several of our officers have volunteered for that event over the years, and it's quite, they've found it to be quite rewarding. I know Vice Mayor is also, as a COPP, has also taken part in that, and he can attest to how rewarding it is to take part in that event. The other community awards I have here are the Green Optimist Club Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award. That went to Officer Joel Diaz and Sergeant Sean Sumner, now Captain Sumner. "The Optimist Tenet: To Aid and Encourage the Development of Youth in the Belief That Giving of One's Self in Service to Others Will Advance the Well-Being of Humankind, Community Life, and the World." Well, both of these officers typified that. Officer Diaz was hired in 2012. He's a bike patrol, crisis intervention officer, drone pilot, and our, our Regional Emergency Response Team negotiator. He's the agency liaison to the Beaver Creek Bike Ways and Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee. He's assisted with bike safety portion of the 2019 Safety Town, which we were not able to do this year. Promoted bike safety throughout the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission's Pedal Pals Grant Program with donated LED bike lights. So in his travels on the bike, he was stopping kids and providing them with the LED lights for their bicycles as a result of this grant through NVRPC. He often stops to chat with local youth while out on patrol. He's very active in the community, involved with numerous cancer awareness and law enforcement. Runs, he's a proponent of Books to the Rescue Program, which equipped first responders with new books and plush toys to comfort children in crisis and build trust between children and first responders. Routinely, Officer Diaz demonstrates a commitment to service to others. Sergeant, now Captain, Sean Sumner, hired January 1992, has routinely demonstrated a commitment to service to others throughout his career. In 2017, he was assigned to Special Services Division, responsible for supervising investigations and our community engagement efforts. He's been instrumental in helping develop, manage numerous community programs designed to educate. to educate citizens, inspire respect for law enforcement, specifically our Safety Town Program, which are interactive experience for early elementary-age children. Also instrumental in developing the partnership with Voices of Green County. That's a community-based self-advisy group for people with developmental disabilities. Our department was the first department in the greater Dayton area that has partnered with the Voices of Green County or any disability, developmentally disabled individuals. The program was designed to educate them in what to expect when dealing with law enforcement, and also educated us on what we should expect when we engage with those individuals. It has led to a great partnership. We put on a number of these presentations for organizations and other police departments to promote the interaction that we've had with the Voices of Green County. Captain Sumner gives of self to service to others, and continually portrays a positive attitude within the agency and his encounters with the public. You know, these are some of the things that, and I don't want to get off on a tangent here, but when I hear defunding police, these are the things that you're going to be defunding in law enforcement, because these go on every day in every community across this country, and these are the things that people don't hear about, which is one of the reasons I wanted to try to do this this evening. We were not able to have our department meeting this year, where we typically get together except for the individuals that have to work the street and man the dispatch center. And we recognize these individuals by going through all of the awards and having them properly recognized. My hope this year was to bring them in here, but obviously with the social distancing issues, we could not do that. So, the PowerPoint was the next best thing. But I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know what these officers are doing in the community, and how much they, if you noticed, I gave you when they were hired. And it ranges from 20-plus years down to someone we just hired a year ago. They're all contributing, and they're all doing the job that we expect them to do. I appreciate the effort they put forth. I'm proud of all of them. And when I hear defund the police, it just makes me think about, well, you'd be defunding this. This is what goes on every day, but not just here. It goes on in every department across this country. So, I'll get off that soapbox, and let's move to the other community award, which was Officer Tim Lamert and Officer Chris Unrow. They received the Green County Consortium Domestic and Sexual Violence Excellence in Service Award. And that award was because they responded to a domestic call, and the assistance they provided the victim in that situation, who was significantly injured in that call by the defendant. They were able to make the arrest, and they assisted this woman through the case, to the point that our consortium on domestic violence and sexual violence recognized their effort and honored them with the Excellence in Service Award. So, we commend Officer Lamert and Officer Unrow for that. Now, I move to the promotions. This is the last part that I have, and I have two of them here. So, if Captain Sumner and Deputy Chief Farida would step up here for me, please. As part of our transition that we budgeted this year, as I'm retiring at the end of the year, we were transitioning to promoting these individuals to take over. Deputy Chief Farida will assume the chief's position, and Captain Sumner is assuming his previous role as a captain. Sergeant Brad Piaszeki, who's due in at 10 o'clock tonight to work his normal shift, could not be here. But let me just take a few minutes to tell you about these individuals. Sergeant Brad Piaszeki, he was hired in 2001. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree from Defiance College in Criminal Justice. He was, served as a patrol officer, Technical Crash Investigator, Evidence Technician, and Officer in Charge. He was a detective prior to his promotion from 2012 to 2020. He's our terrorist liaison officer. He's a sworn member of the United States Secret Service Task Force. He's a mobile forensic examiner. He's our Homeland Security Instructor in Terrorist Response to Bombs. He's a former FOP President, which he stepped down from in June of 2020. He was recognized as a Federal Mobile Examiner of the Year in 2016, and he was a Miami Valley Crime Stoppers Officer of the Year in 2017. So, we commend Sergeant Piaszeki, and he's probably getting in his last few minutes of sleep before he has to come to work at 10 o'clock tonight. Captain Sean Sumner, he's our Special Services Commander. He was hired in January 1992. He has Bachelor of Arts Criminal Justice Leadership Degree from Urbana University. He has served as a patrol officer, field training officer, Evidence Technician, and a five-year member of the Regional Emergency Response Team. He served as a detective from 1999, 2011. He specialized in family and child abuse and sex crimes. He was a patrol sergeant from 2011 to 2017, Special Services Sergeant from 2017 to 2020, and he's a 2013 graduate of the Police Executive Leadership College. The American Legion for Green County and State of Ohio Officer of the Year in 2006, recipient of the Knights of Columbus Blue Coat Award, and as mentioned previously, in the community awards, he and Officer Diaz received the Green Optimist Club Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award in 2019. Lastly, Deputy Chief Jeff Farida. Jeff was promoted to captain when I took over as chief in 2011. He's basically worked with me since that time. He's been a very valuable member of the command staff, and we've had our share of challenges over the years that we've had an opportunity to work through, and I'm looking forward to seeing him take over and take the department to even bigger things, bigger heights. So, Deputy Chief Farida was hired in January 1992. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice Administration, Park University. He also has served as a patrol officer, field training officer, and officer in charge. He's a detective from 1999, 2007, a patrol sergeant from 2007 to 2011, promoted to captain in July 2011, has commanded the Investigations, Operations, and Special Services Divisions. He's a graduate of the Police Executive Leadership College, and he's also earned his Certified Law Enforcement Executive Designation in 2019. And in 2019, this happened during the tornado, he was at the FBI Academy, and graduated from the FBI National Academy. It was in the spring of last year. So, I will turn the microphone over to these two individuals and allow them to say something.
I wasn't told I had to speak. Well, first of all, it's an honor to be here, and I'm thankful to Chief and to the rest of the command staff that they felt that I was worthy of being promoted to captain to run a division. And I, you know, I thoroughly have enjoyed my career here. I love this city, as I said when we did our little impromptu penning ceremony over in the Sallyport. You know, this is, this has been a place that I deeply care about, want to see the excellence of our department continue to push forward, to strive to be the best agency in the state, if not anywhere in other states as well. I think we represent law enforcement and the profession at a high level, and I want to see that continue for when I leave. I want other guys to have that drive. So, I'm just thankful, and I will do my, do my best to continue what Chief has started and the other chiefs even before him, to make sure that we continue to receive that excellent rating. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's a privilege to be here, and it's been an honor to have worked here for, Sean and I started exactly on the same day, 29 years, 28 years, somewhere around there.
Coming up on 30.
Coming up on 30. So, it's been a privilege to be here. It's been an honor to work for this agency and to serve this community, and so looking forward to the next several years as the chief here in the near future. And I just thank you for everything and all the support we get, and it's been a true mentorship that I've had under Chief Evers in my time here. Probably the first person I spent time with in that polygraph examination room for a few hours. However, we just, just give all the credit to the folks here in our community for supporting us, and this is a noble profession, and we're so looking forward to continuing and serving in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to again thank council for the opportunity to give these individuals the recognition they deserve. And in my 38 years here, I couldn't be prouder of these individuals and the job they do for this, this community. This is just a small portion of what we do on a daily basis, and I would invite anyone watching this evening to take the opportunity to get on our website, the city website, go to the police. In there is, if you get the link, you will see the annual reports that tell you not only statistical data, but organizational highlights. Also, our community engagement efforts are listed in there. It's a good opportunity for you to look and see exactly what your police department does, and we have the annual reports on the website back to 2016. So, again, I'm very proud of these men and women and the job they do, and I appreciate the opportunity to highlight that this evening. Thank you.
Well, Chief, thank you, and we're very proud of your service, and we want to congratulate the officers that were promoted and the officers that received awards. It's, it says a lot, and I'm glad you were able to come here tonight and, and put that out over the air for everyone to see. And it, you know, we're all extremely proud of, of your department, and so I would like to give you a round of applause real quick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on. Ordnance Resolutions and PUDs. First is Ordnance 20-15.
This is an ordinance amending the land use plan in accordance with Chapter 158.171D1 of the City of Beaver Creek Zoning Code.
All right. Thank you.
Move to approve, Ordnance 20-10, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
It's 20-15.
20-15.
20-15.
20-15.
20-15.
All right. Now, do I have a second?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion? You were quick on the draw there, sir.
There was.
This is not normally, this is the, the land use plan is a significant document, and so is there, this is not normally a public hearing, but is there anyone tonight that came to discuss the land use plan at all? Please come forward. You're allowed, we request that you keep your time to three minutes unless you have time donated by somebody else. Yes, please.
Okay. My name's Curtis Notstein, and I, I guess my address is 1852 Deerbrook Trail in Beaver Creek. I'll talk about my credentials very quickly. I have a Master of Science Degree in Computer Engineering from the University of California at Santa Cruz. I was also a professor of computer architecture at UCSC. I have 40 years' experience as a engineer and a consultant, and last year I testified twice to the Preble County Board of Commissions and the Ohio Power Signing Board about the solar panels and solar farms. And I just want to inform this group that some of the dangers and some of the risks that are involved with these solar panels, I've researched it, used my technical expertise to, to come up with some conclusions, and I'll just be very brief with this. There's a number of very hazardous chemicals used in the process of making the solar panels. My biggest concern, if we have a tornado that would rip through the field, tear these up, that those chemicals will get into the groundwater and contaminate the aquifers. Some of those chemicals are cadmium telluride, phosphorus boron arsenic, and that goes into the substrate of making the solar panels. Also, the batteries that they use to store this energy, because you have, you only collect solar energy during the daytime, you have to store it for night usage. They're lead acid, or they're lithium ion. And I would suggest that the, you ask the fire department if they're prepared for large-scale fires for these large battery, battery packs. You know, it requires special equipment, special powders, and, you know, training for the safety of the firefighters. So, that's another concern. A couple of geographic kind of things that we need to be concerned about is, according to the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, that this, the Ohio region here gets, is, receives the second least amount of solar radiation in the entire continental United States. It's only at the worst areas up in New York and New Hampshire in that area. So, we get, you know, because of the, you know, cloud cover, the amount of rain, we get between 60 and 80 inches of year of rain here, and the moisture in the air diminishes the amount of solar radiation that we receive. And, let's see. There's some issues that the county, or that the city and the county needs to be aware of is the cost of this. And whoever is going to install these, we need to look, is my time up? Oh, okay. Need to look at the cost of maintenance and decommissioning, because after 20 years, these panels become obsolete and need, need to be replaced. So, that's all I have, and thank you for letting me present today.
Thank you, sir. I believe I saw another hand raised, raised back there. Please come up, give us your name and address, please.
Hi. My name's Nicole Marvin, and I actually am a resident of Cedarville Township, 1334 Brad Feut Road, Xenia. And I'm here tonight about the solar farms. I had read the Dayton Daily News article, and the city planner, Ms. Perreira, had said that she wasn't sure what residents might have as far as issues in regards to solar panels and other than a site, you know, what it looks like. So, I've prepared a list. I didn't know, I only have three minutes, so I'll go over some. But solar power's typically 12% to 20% efficient. Solar power always has to have a backup energy source, so, you know, as far as blackouts and that, things you have to consider, that, actually, let me back up to. I have researched for the last 15 months, because in my area, there is a proposed solar farm for our area out in Green County. So, that's my research, that's where it's come from. What are the plans for solar waste when the panels are outdated, damaged by a tornado, the company goes out of business? Will they be recycled, put in a landfill, shipped overseas? Are wildlife habitats going to be fragmented by the project? Are there threatened and/or endangered species in the area? Are there waterways that will be impacted? If no subsidies were in place for the project, would it continue, or would the company abandon it because it no longer makes sense financially? Has the decommissioning bond been fully funded with the county before the project starts? If not, who will pay to clean up the site if there's a tornado, company goes out of business, the decommissioning bond hasn't been fully funded? Is productive agricultural land being considered for the project? Do you have evidence that the land would be easily converted back? Per our county perspectives, Green County values and wants to preserve agricultural land, so we believe soil classes 1 through 3 shouldn't be protected for true agricultural use, and that brownfields, rooftops, parking lots, old quarries, et cetera, would be a more appropriate use for solar facilities. Do you have evidence that the land would be easily converted back? Per our county perspectives, Green County values and wants to preserve agricultural land. So, we believe soil classes one through three shouldn't be protected for true agricultural use and that brown fields, rooftops, parking lots, old quarries, et cetera, would be a more appropriate use for solar facilities. Have you considered the noise that will come from construction, the inverters, battery storage, the HVAC system? Again, what Curtis said as far as the local fire EMS, are they trained for putting out fires if the array was to catch on fire? And battery storage, again, how would you handle a fire with that? Have you thought about the glare for pilots and birds? Have you considered possible soil sterilization, toxic mineral contamination, water-soil runoff, setbacks for neighboring properties? How would they be impacted? Real estate values, how would they be impacted? Will you, you require annual inspections? So, those are just some of the issues that we've thought about over the last 15 months as we've, you know, thought about the soil, solar arrays. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. In this land use plan, Mr. Burkett, would you like to address any of this at all? I know you can refresh as far as the zoning districts that the solar is allowed, be easy enough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, I know there might have been a little bit of miscommunication. We, we have not received any applications for any, any solar farms. This was just, and, and B, we're talking about the land use plan in this, in this case here, and the solar farm legislation that we are proposing is part of the zoning code, which is the next case. But just wanted to be clear that there's no solar farms being proposed at this time. The only districts that we are proposing to allow them in the future would be industrial districts, the light industrial, heavy industrial. Plus, just from an economic standpoint, for a solar farm to work, it would need to be more than 10 acres. And we've got some pressure points in our zoning code where any development over 10 acres, whether it's in a, a I district or not, or in a straight zoning district, would need to be rezoned and go through the PUD process. So, actually, all these are great ideas and should we get a project ever to move forward and, you know, these are certainly conditions that we can go through and add on to any projects, should that ever happen. But there's no proposal on the table. The reason we're going through this and added it to the zoning code is because a few months ago, we did get a call of somebody said, hey, we're thinking about it, what, what are your regulations? And we really didn't have any on the books and we want to make sure we get some on the books. And, and designate what appropriate zoning districts that they should go in. And that's why we went with industrial zones. But that was, that's for the zoning code for the land use plan as more of a broad brush stroke. And that's for if we should ever decide, or if somebody comes forward and wants to rezone a property, that's kind of where we would start at and say, it's not appropriate or it is appropriate. And that's where we go from there.
Yeah, the land use plan designates where industrial land can be. And I think B4 is one that can conceivably be solar too, isn't it?
Correct, correct, yes, B4.
So, that's what the land use plan, we kind of got ourselves moved ahead to the next item on the agenda, but the, but they all go hand in hand. And so, yeah, I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Is it appropriate to comment now or to wait till the zoning code?
Let's wait for the zoning if we're going to go about the zoning.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I filled out my contact information.
I filled out my contact information and if anyone has any questions, please call me, contact me. I'd be happy to answer anything that I can.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. All right, we do have a motion on the table to approve ordinance 20-15. We also have a second. Any further discussion? And this is the land use plan. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Now, next is ordinance 20-16, which is the zoning code update.
This is a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning code in accordance with chapter 158.175 of the City of Beaver Creek zoning code.
Thank you. And again, we'll offer the same courtesy that we did before. We would, we, your comments, the two that already commented are already in the record, but this is, we will allow people to give input on this if they so desire. All right. This is, this ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Schwartz. Is there any discussion up here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In tandem with the, the two that made comments, I'd simply look at multiple readings if, if an application for solar farms ever came forward. In driving through Cedarville Township, Miami Township, even years after an application came through, there are dozens of yard signs, so there's deep opposition to this, even in Xenia Township as well. So, I would simply say, let's take more time to see what the residents think, see what, see what citizens of Beaver Creek have to say.
I just want to emphasize on that point. So, just to clarify, what we put in the code was to allow private solar farms conditionally in B4, which is highway, highway business, I1 and I2. So, that conditional, conditional use approval would require just one planning commission meeting. However, if a, if a property is over 10 acres, which when we're talking about private solar farms, they're more than likely going to be over 10 acres, it would have to go through the PUD process. So, when we go through the PUD process, there would be a minimum of five public hearings before something like that would be approved, so.
And keep in mind, we, we have put this only, only in industrial and B4. So, this is, this is not some farm out here on the other side of town. This is B4, very expensive property. When you have different industries going on nationwide, it's, it's always wise for a community to have a zoning classification for those industries. And so, that's what's going on. And we chose to, the staff chose to put them in those, those highly industrial areas as an allowable conditional use. And so, we actually would make it very difficult for a solar farm to be, to purchase land here and have a farm. But it can be done. And we appreciate the comments from the people that gave us input. I think when we do have, if we ever do have a conditional use, we certainly want to address every one of those concerns. So, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 20-16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you for the input, please. We appreciate it very much. Next is ordinance 20-18.
This is an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beaver Creek and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Can we, can you elaborate just a hair on this?
Once a year, we go through and submit all of the ordinances from the past year to the company that maintains our Code of Ordinances, American Legal. They go in and update all their information along with Ohio Revised Code. And this is us implementing it so that tomorrow, I can give them a call and say, update it so it's published out for all to see.
Okay. Appreciate that. And this is just, this is a way that we can go back and find everything that we do. Everything that, every ordinance that we pass is, is logged in this document. So, any discussion? Anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 20-18 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion to approve ordinance 20-18 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Next, resolution 20-19.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number five to an agreement for electric generation supply with a competitive retail electric service provider.
All right, Mr. Landham.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a Miami Valley, we're part of Miami Valley Communications Council, which has a long-term aggregation agreement with the surrounding jurisdictions. There's 26 communities who are part of this as far as the actual, this is for commercial governmental buildings and, you know, the traffic lights and signals and so forth. They, Miami Valley Communication Council had hired Schneider Electric to review. They first came back and, at the beginning of the year and said, no, just stick it out till, till the contract ends. And then COVID happened and basically now they, with what's happened with the energy companies are recommending an extension of the contract for better pricing. And this will put it through May of 2024 in order to take advantage of the historically low rate associated savings. We're talking about, also with that, the city managers met with the MVCC and reviewed the analysis and recommended we move forward with a lower rate to extend the contract until, again, till 2024. City of Beaver Creek will save about $6,600 a year, or about, you know, $25,900 over the course of the agreement with the lower rate. Again, 26 other communities who benefit from this program and the total savings to taxpayers when you include all 26 communities will just be over $1 million. So, it all adds up. This is something that only the governmental program can go. We have our own aggregation program for our residents and residential. This is not part of that program, nor can we offer that to residents. So, staff and myself are recommending resolution approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 20-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 20-20.
This is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept the Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grants Program funding.
Good evening again. This resolution allows the police chief to accept state, state grant monies to be applied to the DARE officer's salary during the school year. The grant is through the Ohio Attorney General's Office. The Beaver Creek Police Department will receive $24,617.10 for the 2021 school year. The DARE officer teaches approximately 600 students per year. And staff recommends passage of this resolution.
Thank you. How are you? Yeah, we are just a little bit out of order, but you did a fantastic job, don't you? All right, any questions on, to the new deputy chief? Seeing none, we are now, that we are addressing the resolution 20-21. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, we'll back up to resolution 20-20.
I apologize, I totally skipped that in my three minutes.
You're fine. I do it all the time.
You do.
Now, what was that? Take that mask off.
I did it on purpose, Randy. I'm sorry, no, I didn't. All right. This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council recognizing Randy Burkett's service to the City of Beaver Creek and approving the city manager's appointment of Randy Burkett to the position of Planning and Development Director.
Chief, or not chief.
Chief.
Mr. Landham.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. You know, we've come a, a long ways. A lot's happened this year and we started 2020 on the saddest of note with the loss of Jeff McGrath as a city planning director, economic development director. And, you know, I started the process, of course, for a period of time, staff was reporting to myself. Of course, we were just trying to survive the impact of what had just happened. It, it hurt. That one was painful. And still, everywhere we look, we still see Jeff today. And I think he's probably looking down on us. And so, we started the process and it didn't take me long to go through some applications, go through a process. And one of the applications hit my desk and I, I knew this person, Randy, was going to be interested in it. And so, I started, began to review. And it didn't take me long to understand that, why did I need to go any further? I want to tell you a little bit about Randy. Randy has been with the City of Beaver Creek 13 years as a city planner. Back in February, I appointed him as interim director, which he's, never, just went through what we went through and then, of course, never imagined, then COVID hit and he's interim during COVID and trying to, you know, work through everything all of us were working through, staff working from home and, and trying to keep up online things and outstanding job that he did. You talk about that six months, what I appointed him to was kind of, of course, a trial period to make sure he's good and make sure I'm good and, you know, council's good, everything's good. But never imagined it would be that kind of test right out of the gate for, for Randy. As I said, Randy's been here since 2013, serving as city planner. Randy, you know, one thing I, I do like about this, and, you know, we never hold anything against anyone for not living in the city. That's nothing in our charter, nothing in our employment guidelines as far as that, except for me. But, well, and yourselves as electeds. But Randy lives here in the city. He has two kids in the school district and he's a fifth-generation Beaver Creek. That meant the world to me. Now, of course, you know, does, is there stuff behind that? And that's what was great to see, that there is stuff behind that. The 13 years of his service as city planner, getting to know all the developers and various things. And, you know, he comes to us, this was a big plus for me, you know, his undergrad was the Ohio State University, so that helped. I smiled when I saw that. And he does have his master's degree in city and regional planning from Clemson University. Those kinds of qualities, his dedication, his hard work. He's straight-up honest. The guidance already through the COVID, I could tell the way he interacts with his staff. He interacts with me, is professional. The way he interacts with developers and just the general public is outstanding. Needless to say, you know, there's issues of, you know, he's over, of course, zoning, not only zoning and economic development, but then, you know, property maintenance. So, he's over the, when you get those calls, somebody's grass is too tall or junk car or so on. So, he has a lot of times, difficult challenges on some topics that come up and come past his desk. So, tonight, I am asking for your approval of the appointment of Randy Burkett to the position of Director of Economic Development Department. So, can't, like, again, I, I think tonight, I just want to stress that nobody will ever replace Mr. McGrath and fill his exact shoes. Randy will do it a different way. And I know tonight, Jeff has given two thumbs up and saying, go Randy. And that's where I stand from that. So, I approve, appreciate your approval tonight.
All right, thank you. Would we like to ask Mr. Burkett if he would like to make a comment?
Glad to be here for a second interview. Yeah, I'm glad that you finally called my case up. I was scared there for a second.
We were having second.
I thought. No, but I'd like to thank Pete for the opportunity here. It's been, it's been a rocky six months, but I have learned a ton in the last six months. You know, I can't thank Pete enough for, the open door policy says come up anytime and I've used that a lot, but I appreciate it. Actually, my parents are here. My mom is, what, 1930? No, I'm kidding, 66, graduated Beaver Creek. I might need a place to.
One year, one year before me.
And my girl Kelly's here. She's, she actually went to Beaver Creek with me. We were in 10th grade Spanish class together, so. We were in 10th grade Spanish class together, so I'd like to thank her for being here. They both, all of them have been with me for the last, I mean, helped me through the last six months. It has been the easiest. You know, I'm thankful, I am thankful to learn under Jeff for the last 13 years. I mean, I, I mean, you can't say enough to have a great boss like that and have a great boss again. So I'm thankful for the opportunity. I'm glad to, and look forward to working with everybody over the coming years.
Well, you had a great teacher, and in this, this last several months, it's been, for me anyway, I've been able to see you develop on your own versus trying to develop under a, a voice, I guess. I'm trying, I'm trying to figure the right word, of Jeff McGrath. I mean, Jeff was the, you know, he knew how to run his department, and, and now you are taking that spot and you will develop your own voice. And so I'm glad this is happening. So thank you very much for stepping up to the plate. And if you, what do you want to do?
Go ahead, pass it and then we'll do picture.
Okay, we can do that. So to make it official, do I have a motion to?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-20. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Listen. Put your mask on, guys. You want to go down? Put your mask on, go down.
We don't get this opportunity too much with the change of department. We'll have one more later this year with.
COVID appropriate.
We got hand sanitizer.
Yep. We have hand sanitizer, we'll all use it. Congratulations.
Bring your family up.
You can take your mask off.
All right. All right. All right. Moving on, liquor permits. Deppy's on the hot seat tonight.
Good evening again. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent police notification referencing a new D5J permit for Basil's On Market LLC located at 2729 Fairfield Commons, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the business officers and shareholders for this application request, and staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept without comment.
I have a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we get into some fun action here. Appointments to boards and commissions. And first off, thanks to those that turned in applications for these boards and commissions. And this evening we have vacancies on the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Youth Development Council, and the Environmental Advisory Board. Is that correct? Those, those four? All right. So ladies and gentlemen, I need a motion to open nominations for the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Planning Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And now I will accept nominations, please.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Keith Ayers.
Second.
Is there any other, any other nom, I have a nomination of Keith Ayers. Is there, are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for Planning Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Now I need a motion to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Wendy Rogers.
All right. Do we have any other nominations?
I move to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Mayor, I move to appoint Wendy Rogers to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending to 2822? No. For an unexpired term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Wendy Rogers to the BZA for the unexpired term. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Now I need a motion to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Keith Ayers to the Planning Commission for the, is it an unexpired term? Yes, for the unexpired term.
I move to appoint Keith Ayers to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term.
Second. I have a motion and a second to appoint Keith Ayers to the Planning Commission for the unexpired term. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Now I need a motion to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Mayor, I move to appoint Wendy Rogers to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending to 2822? No. For an unexpired term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Wendy Rogers to the BZA for the unexpired term. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. All right, next is the, do I have a motion to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee?
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee.
Somebody say.
Second.
I have a motion.
We're slowing down.
It's, it's almost eight o'clock, the magic hour. I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Development Council. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Now I'll take nominations, please. How many seats are open on this?
We need at least, just a minimum of one. It was seven.
But you could put more.
Yeah, you could put them all.
Yes, but you have, okay. So nominations, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Gina Turlington to the Youth Development Committee.
I will nominate Teresa Petty.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close nominations for Youth Development Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint both of those individuals?
I move to appoint Gina Turlington and Teresa Petty to the Youth Development Committee for the term ending, is it unexpired, 2022?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Teresa Petty and Gina Turlington to the Youth Development Council. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. I need a motion to open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Move to open nomination for the Environmental Advisory Board?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Nominations, please.
I nominate Jason Tinku.
I'll nominate, and I can't pronounce it.
That's what I was just going to diss, like, trying to pronounce it.
I can't talk.
Any idea, anybody can help me with that?
I move to nominate Adedji Badiru.
Thank you, that, I'll withdraw my. Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close?
Move to close nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Jason Tinku and Adedji Badiru to the Environmental Advisory Board for the term ending, for the unexpired term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint those two individuals to the Environmental Advisory Board. Sorry about that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. And thanks to all those that put in, turned in applications. I know everybody doesn't get exactly what they want all the time when, as far as appointments, but we do appreciate it. Next on the agenda is council time. How about we start over there with you, Mr. Curran?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to attend the first session that, of the Committee on the Income Tax at Laffino Center. It was well attended, a lot of good questions, a lot of good discussion, and of course, that was followed up by one today at 1:30, and they will have the rest. Go to the Beaver Creek City Government website, they'll have the other dates. But I would encourage all the citizens of Beaver Creek to be informed and to at least go to one of these meetings to get full information. Also, wanted to extend my sympathies to Captain Molnar's family, has already been mentioned in council this evening. And also, don't forget, the 25th of August, we have a citizens' lunch, which is a quarter on the cob and ribs, plus many other things. And it's five bucks a person, and I would encourage people in the city of Beaver Creek and elsewhere to come on in and try it, it's just delicious. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that I just want to make a few comments on the presentations that we had today. The police awards in both the school districts have kind of reinstilled my faith in community. Oftentimes, we've been going through a lot of troubled times, we've been dealing with a lot of issues, but it's so wonderful to see the positive outcomes. It's great to see the positivity of the school board. It's wonderful to see what our police and our dispatchers are doing. So I just want to commend you all once again. Next, I've been out and about in the community. My mom was actually in town this weekend, so we went out to the green and we went to the mall this weekend, and it has been, there were a lot more people out than I had noticed in subsequent weekends. And so it's good to see everyone out, everyone was masked up, and so I just encourage residents to continue to support our local businesses in this time of need. Last and certainly not least, the weather has been absolutely wonderful for the past week, and so I've been out enjoying our parks. So as always, commend staff for the upkeep of the parks in the area. It's such a delight to go out and enjoy the community. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dur.
Thank you, Mayor. We've, as a family, had a wonderful time. The Beaver Creek Clay Courts Tennis Facility, our children have enjoyed playing, and I think they've done a nice job creating a very safe environment in the midst of COVID-19. And I encourage citizens, residents, to get out and enjoy those facilities, thinking of the Green Valley Recreation Center, Idler Swim Club, Woodhaven Tennis and Swim, just, we don't know what the future will hold in terms of COVID, and so this is a great way to get involved in the community and to do something, building said community. And so I really echo Councilmember Schwartz's comments in terms of schooling, police, building community, et cetera. I'd like to highlight the Chamber of Commerce's event on August the 25th. It's a virtual lunch and learn how to become a leader who attracts, develops, and retains high-quality team members, and in general, to talk about small and medium-sized businesses to reach out. Many are struggling during this time of COVID-19, and there's a support system within the city, and the Chamber of Commerce is a major part of that. So I'd encourage the event and working through the chamber. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really want to echo Councilwoman Schwartz thanking the superintendent and President Rigano for their presentation tonight with the schools. I appreciate the masks, and we really are creek strong. Chief, you've got a fantastic staff. They, they look over the community extraordinarily well and I'm proud to have, have listened to all of the awards and commendations, and I know that we are in good hands in the future. So I look forward to that. I wanted to remind people that our Parks Department has a golf scramble coming up at the end of the month. There's still time to register a team. You can do that on the city's website. It is on the last Friday of the month, if I'm not mistaken, and the proceeds go right back into the park system. So that's a fantastic event. I'd like to encourage people to get out and shop locally as much as possible to revive our economy, and like Councilmember Curran said, to get the facts on the income tax. I think those are very, very important issues, and if everybody can understand the facts related to the income tax initiative, they can make their own informed decision come Election Day. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate the three Beaver Creek police officers that were promoted recently. I've worked with these guys for quite a few years, and they're, they're well worth it, and I look forward to working with them as we move forward. And the new deputy chief, soon to be chief when the big guy leaves, even though we hate to see him leave, and everybody has to go visit their grandkids sometimes. And I also want to congratulate all the personnel, both sworn, civilians, and the COPPs that earned awards. I know everybody works really hard over there. And also to thank the Beaver Creek Police Department for their professional job they do for our city. And I think that's evidenced by the chief saying tonight about the Kalia accreditation. That's, that's a major accomplishment. A lot of people may not consider that it, but it is, it really is. There's a lot of work goes into that. And the command staff, Sergeant Wesler, who heads that up, does an outstanding job with that, and all of the men and women of our, our police department, both sworn and non-sworn, do an outstanding job for our city. In that same vein, I also want to bring up the police, Citizens Police Academy is coming up on the September 23rd. If you're interested in learning more about our police department and getting to meet some of the people that are there, you can go on the Beaver Creek, Ohio website and look into the police department and contact the CEO, Community Engagement Officer, Officer Brown, and get signed up for that. It's, it's well worth your time and effort. I know I went through it several years ago and am still involved with it, and it's, it's well worth it. On a sadder note for the police department, I join the others here that, for Captain Scott Molnar and his family and the passing of his dad, we, our condolences go out to the whole family. Congratulations to Mr. Burkett for having the interim taken away from your title. Look forward to working with you and congratulations. I'm also looking forward to trying out the new Basil's Restaurant now that they have a liquor license, so, and along with that, try to participate or support all of our local businesses as they try to continue with what they're doing. And the last thing I have is I'm really disappointed that there may not be Ohio State Football this year. Read that today, and that's, that's just heartbreaking. I don't know what I'm going to do with my Saturday afternoon, so, but I guess we have to do what we have to do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And that, and, you know, everybody's put it so well. We've had, it's been a long evening where we've had a lot of interesting input from the schools. We've had the information from our police department and the awards that they receive. And we, we sit up here a lot, and I've said this before, we, I think our community takes our police for granted, but it is not. They do a fantastic job, and they're head and shoulders above a lot of these police departments that you see on the news. And so, thanks again for everything you do for this city. And the other item I want to throw out there, and that's, we got this, we got to remind people that it is census time still. We need to get, if you haven't filled out the census online, let's get it done, please. It's going to make a big difference over the next 10 years as to, for various funding sources, et cetera. So please, fill out the census. I've heard rumor that they're actually going to cut the time down 30 days earlier, the cutoff. So I believe the end of September, and correct me if anybody knows different, but I think end of September is the new cutoff. And so people, please, 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 fill out the census. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll send out some Facebook posts, Randy. We'll get some reminders on that census deadline. Yeah, it's going to be here before we know it. What's here right now before all year long, just about here, is some traffic advisories due to Department of Transportation, ODOT, doing some 675 resurfacing and rehabilitation. Of course, if you've been on 675, you've seen plenty of it. So it was starting tonight, 9:00 through 6:00 AM tomorrow, the ramp of eastbound Indian Ripple Road to northbound I-675 will be closed. And then Tuesday night, starting at 9:00, same thing, 9:00 to 6:00 on Wednesday, the ramp to westbound US-35 to southbound I-675 will be closed. And message boards and barriers and arrows, and we'll alert motorists to the work zones. However, drivers are reminded of the need for additional caution. We don't want, you know, any accidents out there. Not the time to have that. Moving on to Beaver Creek Senior Center, there's still a lot going on there. Transportation is limited that we can provide for appointments. Require 48-hour notice, space is limited, of course, with the social distancing. And, but call each week to reserve a spot if you're a part of the senior center and have those doctor's appointments and so forth, please. 937-426-6166. Also, at the senior center is a puzzle pickup. Stop by the center if you're a member on Wednesdays at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to pick up your puzzles to take home. Of course, that's just members only, please. And for more information, again, our, I haven't shown this, but our, or if I have, I've already forgotten, but our website is newly redesigned, so you're going to find a lot of easier, hopefully. This was a free, I do say free, upgrade to our website, which helped us that we were able to pick out how we navigate. So it's a little easier, so look for the senior center. A lot of times it's under Beaver Creek, it might be under senior center or parks, because senior center is under Parks Department. But they have their own page, and you, and including their newsletter and on Senior Connection newsletter. So find out, keep up with what's happening with the senior center. It may be technically closed, but we're trying to do a lot of online things with them and activities like this that we're coming up with. Which brings me to the next point. And last point is what Councilmember Curran spoke about, the drive-through corn roast, 3868 Dayton Zenia Road. And this is sponsored by the Village at the Green. So what's going to happen? A drive-through lunch includes ribs, hot dog. I'm already hungry. Ribs, hot dogs, corn on the cob, chips and dessert take place on Tuesday, August 25th. So you have a little bit of time. 11:30, the one at the City of Beaver Creek Senior Center. On that day of the corn roast, pull up to the front door of the senior center. They'll have cones and stuff, so you'll be okay. You'll know what's going on. Pay, then drive around to the back and receive your meals. Meals must be reserved, so please call ahead, 937-426-6166. And it's $5 per person, it's cash or check only. Sorry, we don't have the fancy card reader, mobile card readers yet. That, that costs more money, and, not yet. But credit card payments can be accepted prior to August 25th by calling the senior center. We're able to take that over the phone. So enjoy the corn roast. That, that'll be good. So I appreciate senior staff working through everything, that they're trying to still provide the services to seniors. It is so, the senior center exists because people, they like to get out and socialize. And to be closed up is one of the hardest things for the seniors. So I do appreciate our senior staff really trying to go out and, over and beyond, trying to have that communication flow towards the seniors to keep them occupied during this period of time. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comments. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion to, and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.